Welcome to the Town of Acton, Maine's Selectmen's Meeting for July 31, 2018. First order is salute the flag.
Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Approval of the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Approval of the minutes of the last meeting?
We will table that.
Yeah, they're not done because they're not available.
APAT's having issues. Is this on?
Hello?
Nope. Okay, we'll table that. They're not ready yet. Department heads and committee chair updates? Do we have any? Nope, not seeing any. Old business. Road Association Funds.
So, I put out there a template, which was, I didn't print it very large. And I did get some feedback from Arnie. I did have a question on a piece of his feedback, so I don't know if I can try to meet with him or call with him and see what he meant by number three. But have you guys had a chance to look at this?
Hang on.
I glanced over it. I haven't really had a chance to look at it close.
Can I see it for a minute?
Everything that was on it looked quite good to me.
So, I guess what is, one of Arnie's concerns was that we are going to be one of the first towns to do this sort of, this main title, 23 section 3101. So, he wanted, he wanted to be sure that there were other things on this questionnaire that don't necessarily apply to us, but could to another town. So, that was his issue that I was, had a hard time understanding. Talked about 3106, section 1, sub B, 1 or B2. It just wasn't making any sense to me. So, maybe we need to get back together again and hash it out. Yep, did you read his message?
Cindy Hart, Road Committee. I spoke to Arnie after I got it, and we were trying to, we were going to change a couple of things to simplify it. When you get into the documentation on it, I don't have it in front of me here, so. But he is, I think that we should get together again and meet with him because we want to make this be ironclad. I think other towns will definitely use it. They're really interested. So, it's a good plan, needs a little more work. And after, next week when we get started on RSMs, we'll schedule a meeting and come in and work it out with you guys. How's that?
So, you want me to put this on hold until you?
Put it on hold until you hear from Arnie.
Okay.
He's really the one doing it.
Okay.
And we're all, and I got back to him, and I'm assuming that the others he sent that email to are going to be getting back to him too.
Okay.
Okay?
Next, we have Atlantic Broadband Agreement.
They sent two cover letters. We'd like you to sign one copy for them, one for you. They also sent some maps that came with it.
Now, they've...
They made all the red line changes that you guys agreed to.
Okay.
The last one that you went back and forth on, I did physically check that one. I did not check the other ones, but that was the last point of contention.
Yep.
And that has been changed.
Okay. It just has all the... Okay. Yeah, as long as they've changed everything in it. Are you, any discussion on it?
I think it's been back and forth with the lawyers.
Yeah, quite a few times. Yeah.
We've got it covered.
Yep. Okay. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion that we sign the Atlantic Broadband Agreement.
I'll second that motion.
Moved and seconded to sign the agreement with Atlantic Broadband. It's presented to us after running back and forth through all channels. It's okay. That was, what was this? Is this still a tenure?
Yes.
Like the other one? Okay. Okay, any further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Okay.
So, we have to sign.
So, I guess it's just down at the bottom?
It's the system maps that you can post if you want.
It's pretty cool.
It's really only place for one person, but you two want to sign this as well? You could.
Sign the next one? Yeah.
Okay. Give that back to us, please.
Tabled until the end of August, correct?
Yep. Yep. Okay. Lincoln School, I think that's on me.
That's on you.
I have talked to Dick Neal a couple of times. We just need to get together and get over there, and he's going to give me a rundown. He feels he's got a pretty good handle on who owns what in there, and we'll see.
I need you to talk to Lois and Hannah.
Oh, yeah. No, he's just, he's just one of the three that...
Because they both want to give you input.
Yep. 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 So, yeah, I don't think I would, wouldn't make any decision without talking to at least Hannah on it as well, so.
Yeah, Lois called me. She had some history she wanted to share.
Yep, I want to talk to her too, so. I know, for instance, the desks that are in there, I think, came from Ted Kryzak's school. That's last I knew, so.
Yeah, his little old school.
Whether they were original to that school, they were in there, I guess, when he revamped it, so. May have been. The stoves, they're gas stoves. I don't think they probably were ever used in there as a school. They might have been at some point, but the desks, I'd be more concerned about letting go, so. But we got to see who owns them first, so. Okay. Route 109.
So, I had a conversation today with the, first of all, let's go back. So, Tim Susi is no longer in the position with the Department of Transportation. That's the individual that we had reached out a couple of times before, so he's no longer in that position. Randy, and I don't have his last name, that took over the position is a bit backlog, backlogged with the outstanding projects. We kind of ran through where we stood with it and what we were looking for, so he has promised to move it up on the list and come out and take a look at it. From a different, from the opposite side, in Chapley, we actually had an individual reach out to the Department of Transportation and talk to them about a crosswalk on the Chapley side and, you know, for where the cars, where they park and where they walk over to the beach, which is the Chapley side. And I bring this up to you because Pat Adams, who is the higher up at Department of Transportation, has agreed to meet with the Chapley Selectmen on August 3 to look at the area. So, when speaking to Randy today, I kind of, you know, asked who Pat was and how he fell on the ladder and, you know, could I switch hats and show him our concerns from Acton at the same time, and he thought that was a great idea. So, because that's this Friday at 9:00 a.m., I'll double check the time in case anybody want to be there. But Chapley Selectmen are meeting with him regarding that issue and hoping we can just loop around and get some sort of input. So, we are working on it.
You suppose they'll allow us to dovetail it on that? I mean, you said come to that same meeting.
Well, in all fairness, this, this Pat guy doesn't have any idea, he doesn't have any idea that I'm going to switch hats and ask him about the Chap, about the Acton side. I just, I needed to understand who he was, you know, in reference to the woman that's doing the survey and Randy and Tim Susi, and just, there are so many people involved. I was going to tell you what time it was, but...
So, you're going to ask him if he'll do a survey?
Well, I'm going to ask him, I'm going to tell him about Acton's concerns at the same time, and if he's out there looking at a possible crosswalk, maybe he has some suggestions for the other side. And I believe that this gentleman that we're meeting with is, would have been Tim Susi's supervisor, so he might be able to, and Randy was okay with me asking him and kind of going above his head, and I'm just saying with this, this meeting, it might be, it might be helpful, so. Just trying to find when it actually was. Meeting with DOT, Pat Adams at 1:00 Thursday, no, I'm sorry, Thursday, August 2, 1:00 at foot of the lake.
Second... 1:00. It's the day after tomorrow.
Yeah, I might need to write that down. And that, again, is the Chapley Selectmen, so just don't, I mean, doesn't know what he's coming, but if anybody wants to join us, I'm sure both towns would, would work together on some sort of resolution.
Looking to get a crosswalk, Chapley?
Yeah, they were...
On each or something?
Yeah, just going over on that side. The concern that the Chapley Selectmen are hearing is the traffic coming down and turning into Chapley, and the people constantly crossing there. The other thing that Randy said today, I asked him about the signs, remember the Deputy Shaw had the sign concern, no jumping off the bridge. The sign is old and no letters on it. He actually indicated that that was a local sign and that we really should be replacing it, so if you want me to do that, I can talk to the road commissioner on that side.
Can't, can't possibly be that much money to replace that sign.
Yeah, it'd be a good idea.
And, you know, in Shaw's statement is he can't enforce something that's, A, covered by trees and non-legible.
Right.
You know, you can't hold somebody accountable, so.
Right.
It is something minor, but, you know, I mean, all these little things might, might slow down the incidences down there, but I guess just wanting the people to know that we're, the board is taking the, taking it seriously and looking into it.
Definitely. No, I've been...
I would have them all to resign.
Yeah, definitely whatever sign, yeah.
Both of us.
Yep. Yep. I mean, I travel that twice a day to work and back.
See a sign that says no jumping off the bridge?
I haven't noticed it. I've been more watching the speed limits and whatnot.
I'm thinking you might need two.
One from each side?
One on each side, yeah.
Yeah, if we could.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is it okay that I wait till after Thursday's meeting with this guy and see what he has to say before we...
Sure, that's a good idea.
Yep. Okay. Anything else on 109?
That's all I have for now.
Okay. Bridge maintenance update?
Just a follow-up. I know you guys had a meeting last night with the road commissioners, if there was any instruction from me or how it left off, recap? All as well?
Let me at least handle that because you had the...
I would say Dave's supposed to get in touch with you at some point to draft the bid for Row for the 20...
Okay.
As we pass a town meeting.
So, he's going to contact me when he's ready to do that?
Yep.
Okay?
So, that's Row Bridge, and he mentioned he didn't want to do any work on it until the engineers had a chance to look at it untouched, unfixed, no Band-Aids, but was going to replace the guardrail in the meantime?
Guardrail, and also, he said something about having a company come in and take care of all the brush and stuff. I mean, I did...
I think he was going to do that, but I'm not...
I wrote down something about brush hogging or something.
Yeah, that was, well, yeah, I was going to trim the brush.
Supposed to get that done too.
Down in and around the bridge.
But he didn't want to...
And put a new guardrail up and not attach the guardrail to the bridge.
Right, just get a guardrail.
He thought some of the problems was when the cars hit the guardrail. Of course, now they're still hitting the bridge.
Right.
So, I'm not positive how he's going to do that, but...
And West Shore Drive, wasn't that one of the concerns you were going to talk about?
Yeah, Scott said he was going to go down and fix the guardrails there as well.
We talked to him about getting a new guardrail, not just fixing it, but getting a...
What did they call it?
Well, whatever kind of...
Well, there was conflict. They, they thought the culvert still had another 10 years even though it had holes in it, but then they talked about, oh, do you remember the...
Slip lining.
That was slip lining, but I'm talking about, you know, the bridge, the bridge, when you go over it itself, talked about getting a new guardrail, not just putting bolts into the guardrail.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's what I had said to him, you know, to, to get that when we were sitting here, but, and then, yeah, then they started talking about, you know, trying to get another 10 years out of it.
Scott felt like the rocks that were missing from the gabions was already, like, they kind of were built that way, but I don't, I, I can't tell by looking at it. To me, it looked like they fell out, but he said that structurally they, it's still sound.
So, no, nothing further, so nothing that that side needs to do with that bridge?
No.
Did you guys get any more?
And Row was the only...
The grid fine's good for it. That'll actually help the gabion, so that side's good. Only thing would be there except trimming, which I believe he's going to do.
Right, he said something about trimming too, so.
And Canal, you see, you've seen the emails, so we're kind of waiting to hear back from Chris.
Yeah, and I think they sent you another one giving you a date when you have a chance to see it. Okay, so we'll take that off the agenda, and I will wait to hear from Mr. Wintle.
New business, transfer station packing lot.
Okay, so, budget season this past, I guess, January, February. Talked about paving the transfer station, so we went out to bid. We got a bid from Pike, FR Carroll, and Dayton, and this was done before Warren and Finance meetings, before all of that. So, they were, it was in the February months. So, we got three bids from three different companies. The low bid at the time was Pike at $59,000. About a month after the bid went through, superintendent realized that Pike didn't bid a portion of the transfer station by the entrance that he was planning on them doing, so they adjusted the bid to $62,000. We went at $62,000 and change. We went to town meeting with an article for $63,000. Essentially, it was passed. I believe that you ought to make a good, fair effort to decide which company was going to get it because we made an article based on that amount. You can look at Dayton and FR Carroll. So, what happened after town meeting, so a few months went by, town meeting comes and goes, and I contacted Pike the week after town meeting to say, you know, if the money was approved by the voters, we want to go ahead and schedule the work to be done. The problem is that the liquid asphalt has gone up drastically, and he sent me a new bid that brought us to $67,700. So, we spent some time talking to the treasurer and sitting down with Bob and trying to figure out where the difference of the $4,000 could come from. We went back to the original bids, and Pike was still, was still low based on the work. Dayton had come in at $66,000, but it wasn't the, the extra entrance wasn't on there. Anyways, long story short, Pike has agreed to honor because they understand town meetings, and I sent them some of the emails that I know I felt like when I corresponded with the individual from Pike, that I was very clear as to how long the bid had to be good for based on how our town meeting process works. At the end of the day, Pike agreed to go back to the $62,000 and do it for that price, so that's really good news.
The gentleman at Pike, do you remember?
That...
Yeah.
The, the one at Pike that agreed to go down to the price, or the one at Pike that didn't read the emails clearly the first time. Let's not name him.
Either one.
He's fairly new in the position of estimating and, you know, I mean, and I'm sure it's tough for municipalities, you know what I mean, but in the emails, I said to him in February, March, I need this from my Warren Finance, but it's got to be good come June, July, because I don't know until then if the voters will approve it.
Yep.
And they can't control the price of it, but at the end of the day, when it goes up that much, we don't, we just can't find that kind of money.
Right.
We would have had to take it out of Bob's budget, so they reran some numbers and agreed to go up with the matched amount.
Yeah.
And that's, these are the other two, so.
And we approved how much at town meeting?
$63,000.
$63.
Here's the Warren article.
Yep, that's okay.
Got it.
So, with that said, the supervisor that I spoke to at Pike today is anxious to get the work done because apparently the liquid asphalt that's going up is only continuing to rise, so the sooner they can do it, the less loss they're going to take. So, speaking to Bob Mann today, he'd like to have it scheduled on a Tuesday so that they can be open Monday at their regular hours, and they will need to close that Wednesday of the week because they need Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday to pull it up, you know, reclaim it all, get it done. And that's probably going to happen within the next two weeks.
Okay.
And the name is in the lower right-hand corner.
Yeah, I was just looking for, I was just looking for a date. That's okay.
Well, that's the amount. This is the June one.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
In the lower left-hand corner, the dates are in there. See that date?
Lower left-hand corner.
In small print?
Oh, when it was, yeah, okay. Yeah, okay.
The one Kim has, if you look at this one, that's the one they gave me after town meeting.
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, that was good of them to...
Yeah.
Because they were still the low bidder here, so they didn't gain anything.
Yeah, I was just going to say, yeah.
Yep.
Because this was much more, this one.
Yep.
This one was 74, and this one was 60, just about the same.
Yeah.
I mean, so...
Yep, that one didn't include the, the front half, so...
Right, that didn't include, so that was less, so...
No, Pike was good, so.
All right.
Okay, do I hear a motion to accept the, the bid on Pike, the bid from Pike?
I'll make a motion that we accept the bid on Pike Industries.
Do you want to add the amount?
For, can I see it? Sorry. For $62,210 to be started within the next two weeks.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to accept Pike Industries' bid for $62...
I can't hear what I'm talking. I'm getting an echo, I'm sorry.
Quiet in the audience, please.
Hello?
We can hear you back here. So, accept the, the bid from Pike Industries for $62,210, the work to begin in a couple of weeks. Okay for the discussion?
And you're okay, I'm sorry, and you're okay with, you'll see the advertisement on the Wednesday, because whenever they come in and say they can do it, it'll be short notice, but...
Yep.
Yep. No major holidays coming up in the way, so Wednesdays, people usually checked out by then.
Yep.
All right.
Okay.
And the culvert?
Oh, oh, yes, and the culvert, so.
Yes.
Because that's going to coincide, right?
Yeah, so, that was the other piece that my, when, when speaking to Bob Mann today, he did say that there was a culvert at the transfer station entrance that needed to be replaced immedi, almost immediately, especially if we're going to, you know, Pike's doing us a favor by dropping this price $5,000. So, I did speak to Scott, and he thought he could get to it by the end of next week. With your permission, I'm going to need to call him again and say, you know, I need this.
I would put it in writing as well.
Yeah.
That's, he likes things in writing as well.
Yeah, yeah, that way he's going to...
Yeah.
Just because it's got to be done.
Nail it while calling, just follow up with a written letter.
Okay. So, the board supports him, and if I ask him to do it, move...
ASAP.
Thank you.
Yep. Yep. Based on the fact that within, within the next two weeks, Pike is going to be there.
Okay.
So, it needs to be done before that, so...
And he'll have to figure out when to do it too, like on a day the dumps.
Not open.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, call for a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Okay. So, I can put today's date on this. Okay, that one, again, only takes one signature, so.
All right. There you go.
Okay, cemetery appointments.
So, we have two individuals that their terms ran out June 30. They were on a one-year trial to see if, because they're from a neighboring town, to see if it's something they wanted to do and continue to do, and they both reached out to me saying that they would like to continue serving the Town of Acton Cemetery Committee, so to follow along with all the other ones, I prepared three-year appointments.
Okay.
And they're, like, they're both already on it.
Sure. Selectmen's Office, Municipality of Acton, Maine, to Gerald Carter, and I will add the other name too, it's Tracy Lavasser. The Selectmen of the Municipality of Acton do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine hereby appoint you as Cemetery Committee member within and for the Municipality of Acton until June 30, 2021, given under this, my, our hands this 31st day of July 2018. Do I hear a motion?
I move we appoint Tracy and Gerald as Cemetery Committee members until June 30 of 2021.
I'll make a motion. I'll second that, sorry.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Planning Board Alternate Member. We have an opening there.
I received the names of two individuals that were both interested in being the Planning Board, and I have created appointments for both of them because I didn't know what you were going to do. Ken Paul, I did speak to him, and he does need a, a person sooner than later, so Jay Ward and Dennis Long were both, both called me and indicated that they were interested in the position.
What's the wishes? We have two, two individuals, both, I think, would be good on the board. One's new to town, one knows the town. Do we want to meet with the individuals, or do we want to just pick one? What's the wishes of the board?
Can I ask who got ahold of you first?
Dennis Long reached out to me first.
Okay. I don't know if that matters, but I'm just kind of wondering who...
I think, I, well, my opinion based on Dennis's longevity in the Town of Acton and serving on multiple boards, including road committee, Warren Finance, and select board, I, I feel like he'd be a good fit.
I do, I do agree with you. I do feel like, you know, Dennis has been, I mean, he definitely knows a lot about the town. I just think it would be a good position for him.
I think, yeah, I think Jay is on a road committee now and...
I think he's on two, I mean, I think he's doing two.
I think he's just on a road committee.
Road committee, yeah.
Oh, all right. What was I thinking? I keep thinking he was on Warren Finance.
Dennis is.
What else are you doing, Dennis? Is that it?
That's his only committee.
That's it? Okay.
He was on zoning Board of Appeals, but he's, that term ended, everybody's term is ended, we haven't reappointed yet.
All right.
Okay.
I mean, I feel like you're definitely qualified, for sure. Have you done this before? So, this is something, something all new for you. Okay, let's make a decision.
Someone wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Dennis Long to the Planning Board.
Junior alternate.
Junior alternate until June 30, 2020.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to appoint Dennis Long as the Planning Board Junior Alternate until June 30, 2020. Any further discussion? I think, I think you couldn't go wrong with either one of the candidates.
Good candidate.
Yep. Okay. Call for a vote. All in favor? All opposed? I think, I think you couldn't go wrong with either one of the candidates.
Good candidates.
Yep, okay, call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed?
Tax rate.
Don't say that too loud. Item D, tax rate, my second least favorite thing of the year to do.
What's your first?
The first is when we discuss people's property and have to take them from, that's the first.
Here's the tax rate, this bit, two years ago.
Yep.
Is that how you want to start that, conversations?
The year that we cut the tax rate by 30-some-odd cents?
30, 35 cents, yeah, nobody remembers that.
Yeah.
All right, so O'Donnell's has been in, we have run some numbers with the treasurer, we have the total taxable valuation of real estate, personal property, we have a lot of different things, homestead that we're calculating in, we're not looking for you to make a, a decision tonight, I just want to give you an idea of where it's looking like you're gonna need to go. Moving $300,000 into undesignated funds, which is a, a large amount that we've moved, and keeping the overlay minimal at only $37,000, remember your overlay is for your abatements and supplements and those types of things, but the longer we get away from a revow, the more that number needs to be adjusted, because rates change, so, 37 should still be good, but right now you're looking at probably a 25 cents tax increase.
We were at 11...
We were at 1185, so you'd be going to 1205, based on the recommendations. For next week, I will have some more stable numbers for you as far as, you know, what the taxable valuation was, what it's gone up or down to, you have a undesignated fund balance policy that you guys created and signed with the treasurer, so, $300,000 is gonna keep you within that, but we'll get you a balance of exactly what's in there, so that, you know, you could certainly decide if you wanted to go up or down with that, obviously if you go down, then your rate goes up higher, but if you take too much out of that, that's your savings, so, and, you know, and 25 cents, based on the, you know, the transfer station parking lot, the Road Association private fund article, there, you know, because remember, general government didn't go up, municipal management didn't go up, none of those numbers went up, they were the special projects that were added on, so, you know, the voters supported those things, so they may be, you know, expecting...
Strictly, strictly driven by the voters at town meeting.
By those articles, right, so, I'll put all that together for you in a spreadsheet for next week, but...
That'll include how much the York County taxes went up to?
Yep.
Okay, great.
That's, it's not that bad.
No, it's not great, but it's...
I mean, and like I said, depending on the undesignated fund, you can...
Actually, last year, we went up 60-something cents?
No.
No?
I don't think it was that much, no, it was a...
Wasn't it like 40?
I think it was like 30-something.
But there was a huge chunk in there that we had to come up with for county tax.
But we took it out of undesignated funds.
Okay, okay, that's right, so, okay.
So do you have any other questions or things that you want to see, this is generally the time of year that we think about committing taxes, because we need two or three, two or three weeks to get the bills and prep everything, do you want to meet with the auditor, do you want to meet with the, you know, you want to start with just the breakdown next week and see if that answers the majority of the questions?
Yep. And we haven't had a revow done in a number of years.
We had it done in 2010, 12, somewhere around 12, was it 11, 12, have to look.
Yeah, somewhere in those, just before I came on the board.
So generally, it's, you know, 10 to 15 years, tops.
Yeah, but they've also been, they've also been looking at everything that's sold, they've been readjusting properties.
Right, so they still, right, they still take all of your building permits every single year, good, bad, or otherwise, and then go out and look at them, so they're, they're, you know, they're definitely staying on top of it.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I talked with him, the, what is his name again?
Dennis.
Dennis, he was good about explaining, you know, what he had done and stuff.
Yeah, they're, they're definitely a good company, and it's good that it's outsourced.
Okay, anything else on the tax rate?
No, sir.
Public comment, anyone, the public have anything they want to say? Anyone at all?
Quiet tonight.
Okay. Announcements and upcoming meetings on, anyway, we're heading into August tomorrow, this was a quick summer, I don't know if anybody else feels that way or not, August 2nd, Planning Board at 7:00, August 3rd, Muslim Lake Dam Meeting at 8:00 a.m. That would be me.
Me, too.
You?
Yeah, we have to remember to be there.
And that's gonna be here.
Yes.
Correct. Do you need anything that I need to know, anything for me for the meeting?
Coffee.
Uh, yeah, we have to make sure that Adele knows.
She does know about that, yes.
Okay.
No, nothing for me, so, you'll be here at 8:00, all as well?
Yep. Uh, let's see, that's this, that's this Friday, uh, let's see, August 7th, Select, Select Board Meeting at 5:00, August 8th, there's a blood drive at the fire station from 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. August 13th, aquatic workshop at 11:30.
What is that?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask you some question.
I thought you scheduled that.
Me?
It says in connection with the library.
Maybe it's not...
Well, it doesn't say it there, but that's what it says on my calendar, didn't you do, well, it's 11:30 to 4:30, it's, isn't it similar, I thought it was similar to the one that you did last time with the...
No, that was always 2:00 to 4:00.
What were you doing with the Gaffney Library? Is this some kind of aquatic thing with them, no?
We just did our four lecture series.
Okay.
I'll get just more information for next week, I've got the details out on my calendar, I just don't have it memorized.
I hope I'm not losing it.
August 14th, Selectmen's, 5:00 p.m. The 16th, Rec Committee at 7:00, 6:00 o'clock as well, the 16th, the Planning Board at 7:00, the 21st, Selectmen's Meeting at 5:00, 28th, Owl's Luncheon at noon.
I'll call with the...
And the 28th, Board of Selectmen, at 7:00, anything else?
At 7:00, that's a typo.
Yes, it is, it's typo, that's gonna be at 5:00. There we are, Board of Selectmen's on the 28th at 5:00. Okay, do you have anything else, Elise?
I just want to remind people that the Acton Public Library has two museum passes, one for the Children's Museum and Theater of Maine and Portland, and that's a 50% off pass for admission, and the other one is for Strawberry Bank in Portsmouth, that's free admission for two adults and up to four children, free, and they do offer free parking, and it's a great place to go spend the day with Prescott Park across the street and lots of restaurants.
Acton Fair is also coming up.
It is.
I don't have the exact dates, 21st?
No.
No, 23rd, somewhere through there.
24th through the 26th, uh, 23rd, 23rd, 24th, 25th, and 26th.
Okay, 23rd through 26th, Acton Fair. And the circus that was in town yesterday, any import on that? Did you go? No, you were, did you go?
I did go.
I knew you were having...
Was it fun? The kids all said they had a great time, so...
Yeah.
It was a circus, huh?
Circus, all right, good.
I don't remember it ever being in town, is, was it before?
No, that's the first time.
Well, that's good.
Okay, do you have anything, Kim?
I don't, I think I'm good.
Okay.
I made the motion that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Move to second to adjourn, all in favor, all opposed, good.